All right. It being six o'clock Tuesday, July nineteenth. Call this meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to order. If you'll all rise and salute the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from July fifth, July twelfth, July twelfth Executive Session, and April nineteenth.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one financial item. We have a transfer. Oh, warrants. Approve the warrants. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number twenty-eight for one hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. General warrant number one zero six nine for a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-nine cents. General warrant number one zero zero one for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. General warrant number one zero zero two for two hundred dollars. And payroll warrant number two for a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Back to the transfer. We have one request for transfer appropriations with restrictions for forty-seven dollars and five cents. And that's a accounting error. From the police training account to the police overtime account for an unposted payroll which resulted in this negative balance. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The next thing we have is a letter to the Congregational Church. It has to do with roadwork, upcoming roadwork plans. John, you want to read that?
This is a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the members of the First Congregational Church in North Brookfield. We, the Board of Selectmen in North Brookfield, would ask the First Congregational Church if they would give, if they would agree to donate and give deed of approximately ten feet of land on the west side of your property between School Street and the lower driveway of your parking lot along North Main Street. As you may have heard, the town in North Brookfield, with help from grants secured by the Downtown Development Committee, have the opportunity to make improvements to the North Main Street, including more accessible sidewalks. If you would be willing to donate this land, we can make North Main Street wider and incorporate a sidewalk on the east side of North Main Street. The wall on the edge of your property can either be moved back to accommodate the sidewalk or made into a gradual slope that will meet the sidewalk. The Board of Selectmen would be glad to meet with you, your committee, and the members to go over plans and show you the engineered drawings we have up to this date. Please contact our administrative assistant, Ashley Barry, five oh eight eight six seven zero two hundred, if you would like to set up a meeting. Sincerely, Jason Patricius, John Krippe. And that has to do with the CMR PC sidewalks and everything. All these, we're trying to make it user-friendly downtown, so.
So I'll entertain a motion to sign that and send that letter.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next thing we have is to sign the police union contract for July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion.
Did you get to read the, read it with all the practices and stuff?
I didn't get a chance. I'll go with it. Motion made. All right. Motion's been made. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Nope.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. New business. Town park grant with Lions Club for handicap access. I assume that's why you're here.
Yeah, that's what we did.
All right. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. The, uh, these gentlemen here from the Lions Club approached me a while back, about a year ago. And we're talking about the possibility of doing something that makes a little handicap accessible and enjoyable for people. We do have wheelchairs going down the trail that we have there now. But it's limited. It's very limited for what handicap can do there. The park's been expanding. The friendly golf has become quite popular in the area. The park itself has been pretty busy, such as the rail trail in Ethanol. So I see the town heading in that direction with the parks and trails, and I think it's a great thing. So I wanted to entertain it as the committee chair for the park to listen to what they had to say. And just quickly, you guys know Jim, Jim Buzel, obviously. We have Kurt Jameson. He's the district governor for the Lions Club. And also, we have Jack DeCock. He's the Bay State VIP for the Lions Club. These gentlemen, you know, working very large organization, very financially stable organization. And they also have access to some very large grant opportunities that are fully accessible to the Lions Club. And we walked the property down there the other day, and I'm going to turn it over to them real quickly. But the bottom line was they're very, very interested. And along with Senator Colby chimed in on it to possibly help to, to get something, maybe some type of decking. You know, we did a little something up to scoop up at Domes Pond yet. But this is going to be a little more expensive, whatever the money travels, what can take us. But we didn't want to get the ball rolling until obviously we ran it by the board. And there's, I don't think there's really any conservation issues there because we're not getting into any of the swamp lands or anything. It's just along the border of the pond and the trail at this point. So a few gentlemen just want to speak up on what you think and why you want to do it and what's the opportunity of those. There was no money from the town going into this or anything like that.
So essentially, the project would entail, from the main parking lot down there, a graded pathway to the pond, which would be with, uh, bluestone, you said?
Crush bluestone.
Crush bluestone, which packs down well. And it would make it easy for wheelchairs to roll over. And then a big wooden platform down the edge of the pond itself, giving access to handicap people that might want to spend time with their family. We have picnic tables there as well. The pond is stocked, so they can share, if their grandkids go fishing or something, they can share quality time with friends. And ultimately, we'd also like to make a pathway all the way around the pond with the same materials so that they could move throughout it.
And Jack has extensive background with these types of projects from the Cape Horn Zoo. And Jack, do you want to speak up on that?
So basically, we were talking a minute ago about the funding. So whatever funding is available, and maybe we do this in phases. So we get a bundle of money now, we can find out how to spend it, and we can try to end up doing. I did ask a bunch of questions, and based on the green light here, we'll go through those and come up with some answers about where we want to have access for the backhoe and dredge the pond once in a while.
I originally got permission from the Transfacing Commission to dredge it with the backhoe. Just pulling up the edge, you know? At some point in time, we'll be able to take a tractor down there, and maybe we can just clean it up a little bit. But nothing drastic.
Basically, just trying to figure out what kind of use we want to have with the park, what kind of activities do we put in an octagon deck? Do we just put in a platform? Those type of things. Want to make sure that it also complies with the ADA. I think the trail coming down, for the most part does. I've started the measurement for the slope. We'll figure out if we're within the guidelines there. The crushed bluestone, we've used it, they've used it now with a trail on the Cape, at Dennis, at Johnny Kellard Park. As the Dennis Trail, the Dennis Trail Trail, basically is contained inside the park. It's a six-tenth mile loop. We're almost approaching that same idea here, where we have a loop trail around the pond. If you use a crushed bluestone there, yeah, that's really good. It packs down well. And then it's permeable, so it doesn't, uh, pond up on the trail itself. And we'll worry about things like, you know, do we go next to the pond or do we go away from the pond to avoid some marsh areas? Do we extend into the weeds that are on one side of the pond? So we'll go around a tree rather than taking out trees. We want to keep it as natural as possible. And then the other things that we're looking at are benches and other places.
I'll bring the tables and benches and tables.
Yeah. Making them ADA accessible, so the table right now we're not ADA accessible. People have a place where you can roll in with a wheelchair.
The guidance club just contacted me too, from Brookfield. They're looking to have their outings there. I have the podcasting permission to have outings. And I told them, we obviously don't pull up the sheet, then we sign, you know, so we know when the bigger outings are there, where people are down there accessing the place. So, so, you know, it's nice to see the park getting used. And my opinion is a great opportunity to have something done that has no plastic horse to agree on it. And it opens it up even further than Jason and his friends with the toughness of the friendly golf. Cranking, people love it, and it doesn't cost anybody anything.
So what are the other things that are going on the Cape? It's been called the Dennis Trail Trail now since nineteen ninety-one, I think it started. Trail is very, little used because so few people can actually feel the trail. So when I first showed up in there in two thousand and fourteen, I had a product that was going to replace the need for trail, although you have to trail there anyway. But we ended up putting plants in planters around the trail as well. So now it becomes more of a sensory garden. So now people who are blind can actually feel and smell the different plants. The descriptions of everything would be audible for the blind, but they'd also be available, more information available through the webpage. So you can scan a, you can go down to the item and then drill down and get more information. That would be available for blind and adult. So we're trying to make it universal access, universal design, tough care, trust base. But adding those other features, the self-watering planters that we're putting in, we're going to put those in the Cape as well, so. The folks at the Cape don't love the idea. They're actually sending a check down, and we'll get started on that by next week or so. Essentially, we have the same, the same thought here, what we have here, what we can do.
Kurt, Kurt, you want to chime in on the district's possibility of planning?
Yeah. It's, uh, my research is going like, uh, Lions Club International has a series of grants. We could go for an environmental grant, which is, which is, is a matching grant to LCI, Lions Club International. So they would provide up to ten, ten grand, with the Brookfield Club giving five, and they'll give, and they'll match that five with them. With this grant, you need at least two clubs. So we possibly go to West Brookfield Club, two, two. It's basically just sign on, more or less. I mean, they don't have to be financially involved, just to sign on. Just, because all the matching grants have to be two or more clubs or zones or districts and stuff like that. So, uh, once we get the final okay, and Jack comes up his thing, we can put all, we can put all the good, we can put all the proper numbers together. And, you know, and then we'll have proof that Brookfield Club got here. I think, I think they'll have to show a quarter of it, like half of the half, in the bank account before we can go through with the Lions Club International grant. And then, and then we just, then it goes further up your chain.
So, um, yeah, that's, Ryan, do you have much trouble down the park? I just, I'm wondering, do you have many calls down there at all with the friendly golf? I was just curious. Maybe a lockout every once in a while. Yeah, lots of them. Been picking up a little bit of trash here and there, but not too bad. Considering it's supposed to be walk-in, walk-out with the rubbish and stuff, they've been pretty good about it. But, uh, I mean, this issue here is, I think it's a great opportunity anyway. But we, you know, we want to move forward with that, and a blessing here, and then, and keep the positive and have a good one.
One thing where you had mentioned ADA tables and whatnot. That's what we have at the little park over here. The big picnic table is ADA accessible, where there's not a board coming across to the seat. It loops down, so you can put your chair and slide in. And the round table there, my wife and I donated, it's missing one bench on one side, so you can, and I can hook you up with those people. Ashley has, uh, the company that we bought those from. If you want to get something that matches it, just have a look at what we have down here. They're excellent. They're rugged tables. I think you guys have one down there. Didn't Chapentiers donate one?
We have a bench, and I got one coming from two families that have added with plaques.
It's kind of the same.
Yeah. Memorial benches.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that company that we bought them from was very accommodating to the town. They gave us a deal because we bought so many benches. Might be able to get the same thing.
We also have a connection to Trex.
Yeah. As far as the, as far as the organization that makes that Trex decking.
Yep, yep.
If, if, if us guys, if the Lions Club would, would gather up three hundred pounds of, of all, all kinds of, you know, you use plastic models and stuff like that, they would turn that into a bench. But, but we don't know if we can make special benches out here. Right now, the ones they get, just the standard bench. I haven't investigated more to see if we can customize it a little bit.
Sure.
Uh, they, they might. We don't know. But at least if they can get the standard benches, all made of the same material, you know?
We can get three hundred pounds of nip bottles out of this town and hand them over to you. There's one bench right there.
Yeah. Yeah. While we're on the topic though, as we develop these trails and parks, and, you know, I started this one years ago, and John, you were going at it with all these other trails. I think we really ought to sometimes start thinking about long-term management of them. Because like, myself and the committees, they come and go, and it's becoming difficult to maintain them. And we're adding on to them, and it's becoming more popular. But we really don't have a maintenance program kind of designed of how we can handle it. You know, that maybe down the road, we got to think about. You know, same for your trail, mine, and, and I would like to explore someday this million-dollar view up at the water department. I think that'd be something, we'll get a small picnic table park up there. That's a million-dollar view up there. I took Brandon up there, isn't it? It's just, it's just phenomenal. It's almost like you could go to the bar. Not many towns have that view to have a lunch and, and stuff.
Yep.
When I talked to the water commissioner up there, they, they had no problem with it whatsoever because all their stuff is closed in, dang. Again, it's just, it's another place the police have to check and all, but that's something I would hate to see go past down the road. If we could do something great, something simple. But it's just gorgeous up there. And so has trees come down. The view, I haven't gone up yet. It's just unbelievable.
If we took out a few on the south side, you'd be able to see almost the Hartford.
It's back from when, you know, when we were kids.
Yeah.
And you could see. It's just gorgeous.
Well, that could tie into the Bates Observatory restor that I'm trying to get. Kind of ran out of steam up there because I got on to other projects, but we're still trying to get the Bates.
But that's definitely something to, I think, don't you think, Ron, enough to see in that, to take a peek at?
Fantastic opportunity.
Ryan, you've driven around that open side, yeah? Yeah. I mean, that, it's just gorgeous up there.
Yeah, but like you said, we need to come up with a long-term maintenance plan. But I think that the idea with bluestones is great because that's low maintenance and keeps the weeds down and everything, so.
Yeah, I'm talking about mullins and picking up and all that kind of stuff. You know, it's getting tougher, you know? So I think as we develop and the town's taken on these projects, and it brings a lot of people, I believe, into town. From what I hear, it's just that now we got to kind of set up some type of maintenance. Down the road, we should just discuss it.
As you and I get older, it gets hotter.
Yeah, I do want to say that.
I'll say it. I'll say it. We need the younger crowd to come in.
The Lions Club, they're trying to keep the trail from there to vent wind in this form. The Lindsay Sierra and Andy Karen and them have been in there. You know, there's been three donated lawn tractors that have now crapped out, so we got a couple of lawn tractors. So these things are becoming problematic if we want to keep them clean. And so I think, you know, maybe grants, something, some summer help, something, I don't know. But we should probably kind of work on that down the road altogether and see if we can come up with a plan to, you know, maybe get some summer jobs in there or something. I can get trucks and pickup trucks and stuff through my programs for free, you know? But we need some grant money to maybe pay a couple of kids, you know, a summer job like we used to have down the beach, you know?
Leaving that to volunteers.
Yeah.
Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts.
Yeah, that's pretty difficult. It's very difficult.
I know. I've asked.
I've been reaching out, you know?
Yeah.
The Eastport Lions Club has a new program where people adopt trails and they maintain the trails. And part of that is, I mean, they have an app, and obviously you walk the trail and you take pictures of it. My husband and I do when, um, but so we go down there and we're like, we'll clear things off the signs. But something like that might work too, at least initially.
But I mean, I kind of envision things as, and other people do, where I want to see the town have a lot of trails open, like going around Domes Pond and all those places. Those are all accessible. But, you know, even electric bikes downtown that plug in, people go rent and stuff like that. You gotta think ahead, you know? Something that you can access on your rail trail and other things, maybe wheelcar, whatever, you know? But all these thoughts go through the mind. Where we live off the beaten path, what draws people here is, is trails and scenery and the orchard and all that kind of thing. So, and we could keep developing those areas, I think it's going to grow like a weed, you know?
So getting back to the, the town, the town park. I think it's a fantastic idea. What do you need from us exactly?
Just a blessing to move forward. Didn't want to get these guys involved in asking for money and designing anything.
Because I don't, I don't see, I don't see an issue. I think it'd be better for everybody, right? I mean, from the police perspective, it's not an issue, right?
I know. I think it's fantastic.
So, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to, um.
To bless Joey.
To bless Joey, yes.
And his, and his group. Bless you, Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome. All right. We have a couple more appointments for fiscal year twenty-three. We were waiting for updates on the committees themselves. We have the local cultural council. Karen Erickson, secretary; Sharon Donovan, treasurer; Sue Lewandowski; Ann Adams, Connie Moore; and Jillian Phillips. And we have NB Helps. Sue Lewandowski, advisory liaison; Stephanie LaChamber, chair; Katie Bychik, vice chair; Rachel Milakovic, secretary; Kristen Kularski, de pass, treasurer; and then volunteers Melissa Seidler, Caitlin Gaines, Carolyn Ryback, Carol Ryback, Courtney Ashley. So I'll entertain.
Is that still NB Helps? Excuse me?
Yes.
It stayed NB Helps?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to appoint those two committees.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have a one-day liquor license request for Still Hearts. They've done things like this several times. It is for outdoor music, food, and alcohol in the parking lot with access from Fourth Street only. No alcohol off property. September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven AM to ten PM. It's for their thirty-fifth anniversary celebration, and it will benefit the playground in honor of Wally Wa. All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Uh, motions been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Public comment period.
Just a reminder, the Historical Society Museum's open generally on Saturday mornings and by appointment. Always check the Facebook page to double-check our hours because, you know, sometimes, I don't know, whatever. But that's been the plan so far, and it's working. So hopefully, the rest of the season will be the same.
All right. Excellent. Okay.
I have a question. The National Night Out group was hoping that the Board of Selectmen might set up a table at the, at the event and offer a little activity or just a little information. That's all the boards and committees.
What date is it again?
Um, I'll be second.
What time is that at?
Uh, five to eight.
We have a meeting that night.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I did check that.
Okay. We do. Yep. At six o'clock. We'll probably stop by though.
Okay.
But yeah, tables probably out of the question. All right. Anybody else? John, two minutes?
Two minutes?
Sure. I mean, you already, you already had twenty.
That was Joey's time. I just added to it.
You did more talking than eating.
I just added to it. Uh, we got to thank you, Card, Jason and I, from the Senior Center for the donations following the Fourth of July celebration. We had some extra Diet Coke, some extra paper plates, napkins, forks, and stuff. Instead of keeping it for next year, it was donated to us. We gave it to the Senior Center, and they were so appreciative, appreciative that we gave it to them. They gave us a nice thank you card, so, uh, the stuff, we have no place to store it. So I thought it wise, we thought it wise to donate it to the Senior Center because it saves them a few bucks and they're always doing stuff. And Haniford's gives them a lot of stuff. They do bread and cupcakes and donuts and things every week. I think on Wednesday or Thursday or something, they have a, a bread day. So some of the stuff came from Haniford's too. So that was it. Less than two minutes.
Good job.
Good job. All right. Announcements. We have a letter from the Friends of the Townhouse. Says, "Since two thousand and six, the people in North Brookfield and the Friends of the Townhouse have had a dream. Save the historic townhouse. Bring it up to code so that everyone can enter and use it. Make it a vibrant center of everything. Once again, welcoming people as they gather for programs and performances, proms and graduations, and perhaps even a bite to eat. During the past year, the Friends have come closer than ever to realizing that dream. Since June is the time for renewal, it is a perfect time to reflect on what we have accomplished this past year and set our sights on the way forward. While partnering with area businesses and community organizations, the Friends held the following events to raise funds and promote public awareness. Arts in the Park, Know Your School Night, the Family Fun Fest, the Beemis Holiday Fundraiser Workshop, and the May Festival, for which the Friends acquired a fifteen-hundred-dollar MCC festival grant. Upcycle, our first Roar program was a hit with area residents. Giving Tuesday and the year-end appeals netted over six thousand dollars for townhouse restoration. Working with SBL, a nonprofit consultant, we received over twenty-two thousand dollars from foundations. After a request by the Friends for state aid, Rep. Donnie Bertham secured fifty thousand in ARPA funds for North Brookfield to use for restoration of the townhouse. And just in, word that the Friends have received a grant of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Mass Cultural Council, with it, we can match any donation made to the Friends of the townhouse up to a max, maximum of thirty-five. of the townhouse up to a max, maximum of thirty-five thousand dollars. As we move forward into a new membership year, we encourage you to look in the newspapers and on our social media for announcements of the following. The Fall ROR Programs, our Friends YouTube channel highlighting area artists, our new building community Friends T-shirt, a very special Friends Annual Meeting, the Friends Oktoberfest at Common Grounds. Please support us with your membership and remember our matching grant opportunity that doubles your donation. All our success has only scratched the surface in our efforts to raise the funds to make our dream come true. Sincerely, Jim Buzel, President.
All right, so how does that matching grant for thirty-five thousand work? They don't get thirty-five thousand unless they collect thirty-five thousand.
Right. So, that's how matching grants.
Yes, but I mean, it doesn't actually state that in there, so they haven't got that money yet.
Right. All right, we have required ethics training for all town, uh, employees and, uh, appointees and elected officials due no later than August thirteenth. The Board of Selectmen office will be closed from July twenty-fifth to August fifth. Uh, we will still have our meetings, but the office will be closed for those two weeks. And now, uh, we have a, uh, letter from the town clerk. John, could you read that?
On behalf of the town clerk, reminder, two thousand twenty-two dog licenses. Dogs must be licensed by September first to avoid the fifty-dollar late fee. If you have a dog, it must be licensed according to Mass General Law. Town clerk's office is open normal business hours. You can also mail a payment or pay online. Update on the special town election. Nomination papers were turned in and certified. We have two candidates, Elizabeth Brooke Canada and Patrick Gustafson. The electric, the election will be held concurrently with the state primary on September sixth from seven AM to eight PM at the Senior Center, twenty-nine Forest Street. There will be early voting and vote by mail available. The application for vote by mail is available on the town clerk's page. Last day to register to vote is Saturday, August twenty-seventh. This is also the first day of early voting. The town clerk's office will be open from one, one PM to five PM. Monday, August twenty-ninth is the last day to request a vote by mail ballot. The town clerk's office will be open until five PM, and early voting will be available. Tuesday through Thursday, August thirtieth through September first, the office will be open regular business hours, and early voting will be available. Please note that the hundred-and-fifty-foot rule prohibiting campaigning around the polling places applies to the early voting location. This includes campaigning for or against a candidate, or questions, or signature gathering of any kind. Also, the town offices will be open during early voting. So please be aware that there are more than just voters in the building. Any questions, please contact the town clerk's office, five oh eight eight six seven zero two zero three.
All right. Anything else?
What's that, from Bridges?
It's just information.
Information.
All right, uh, there being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.